If you would all please stand with me for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During this evening's meeting, each item will have a time for the public to speak if they wish to. If there is any items that are not on today's agenda that someone would like to speak in reference to a planning and zoning issue, now would be the time to be recognized. Seeing none, we'll move on. Meeting minutes from September ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Do we have any changes, additions? If not, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number one, Legislative Ordinance thirty-one thirty-one, Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment, nineteen-twenty Sheeler Avenue. Owners Marvin Wade Reed and Susan Thomas Reed. Applicant Jonathan Hughes. Mister Song. Oh, Mister Howe.
Yeah, thought I'd trick you tonight.
He got taller.
Yeah, so pinch handing for June Song tonight. Bobby Howe, Planning Manager for the record. Uh, this is a future land use amendment, small-scale future land use amendment from county rural and county low-density to residential low, which permits a maximum density of five units per acre. The site is forty point one-six acres and is located nineteen-twenty Sheeler Avenue. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to city residential low in the order to develop a subdivision consisting of a hundred and fifteen single-family residential units on the subject property at a total density of two point nine-two dwelling units per acre. You may recall this came before the Planning Commission back in August. Uh, the reason it is here tonight is because after first reading at City Council, staff discovered a technicality in the Land Development Code where the requested residential low suburban future land use did not correspond with the residential two-family zoning that the Planning Commission recommended approval of. So therefore, that's why the applicant is requesting their, um, residential low future land use designation because Table one point eight-two in the Land Development Code requires that consistency. Uh, the development program has not changed. Uh, it is a total of two point nine-two dwelling units per acre and a hundred and fifteen total single-family residential dwelling units. As you can see, the future land use of the area to the north is residential low. Properties off to the east are residential low as well. And to the south is, um, it's residential high, which allows ten units to acre. So the five is consistent with the surrounding area. But the applicant has pledged to keep it at two point nine-two dwelling units per acre. Uh, the recommended motion from DRC is approval and the recommended motion from staff is approval. Uh, myself and applicant are available for any questions you might have.
Very well. Thank you, Mister Howe. Anyone have questions of staff?
No.
Very well. Is the applicant here and does he have a presentation or just available for questions? Okay. Does anyone have questions of the applicant? Very well. So everyone here from the public wishes to speak on this matter. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mister Chairman, I can create the motion. Mister Hughes has been a good partner for us of the city, so I'm happy to do this. Uh, proposed to find the proposed change in the future land use designation from county rural and county low-density to city residential low consistent with the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas recommending approval of the proposed change of future land use based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Dumey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. Thank you, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, Legislative Ordinance three-one-three-five, Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment, five-one-one-eight, Plymouth Sorento Road, Kipps Tavern. Owners David Dupone. Hope I didn't butcher that. Applicants LPG Urban and Regional Planners. Location five-one-one-eight Plymouth Sorento Road. Mister Howe.
Thank you. For the record, Bobby Howe, Planning Manager. Property is located at five-one-one-eight Plymouth Sorento Road and is approximately point four-one acres in size. It is a parcel that you see with black and then the aerial shows the vicinity. Uh, this is the most recent aerial that was available. However, the Wingspan Development has started construction where the red dot is. Publix, uh, shopping center is just to the south of the property. The applicant has submitted a future land use amendment from county rural to city mixed use. Uh, this item will be subject of an annexation request before the City Council tomorrow evening. Uh, the annexation agreement that's a, uh, that has been requested by the applicant with that has requested that the future land use and zoning be considered on the same City Council agenda as the annexation. So thus what, this is why the Planning Commission is being asked to consider the future land use of this evening's meeting. Uh, as you see, the future land use of the property to the west is mixed use, to the east is in the county. And the applicant is requesting the future land use amendment, bring the property into the city as it was, and specifically the Village Center Zone of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code District, as it was a former bar in unincorporated Orange County, uh, that lost its non-conforming status. A tavern is a permitted use within the Village Center of the Form-Based Code area. And that's the applicant's reason for the request of the annexation and the assignment of future land use from county to city and the subsequent zoning. Uh, as I mentioned, it's located in the Village Center of the Kelly Park and Form-Based Code area in which a bar tavern is a permitted use. The Development Review Committee recommended approval and the recommended motion this evening is approval. Uh, myself and I believe the applicant is here as well for any questions you might have.
Very well. Thank you, Mister Howe. Anyone have questions of staff?
I do.
Commissioner Washington.
Okay, uh, the Village Center concept. Now, uh, Kipps Tavern, um, is surrounded by, uh, other subdivisions that are coming out of the ground. Uh, but now I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the whole idea of the Village Center concept, much like, uh, Wild Oaks.
Mm-hmm.
That's in my mind, that's my reference point. And Wild Oaks is bare ground, what would be coming out of the ground and developed into a, uh, Village Center. So here's my, my difficulty. The Kipps Tavern has been there for years, since nineteen seventy-six, I believe, but it's isolated. So, uh, I, I, I'm having problems seeing how the connectivity that we're looking for in a Village Center with roadways, pathways, other businesses, uh, it, it lacks that.
Right.
And that's what's bothering me. So, so even, uh, in the paperwork, and there's a lot of it, and I read every line, I, I see the staff says, well, yeah, it meets the code for mixed use. But in the spirit of the Village Center, it sounds like the staff is saying, I don't think so. That's my feeling about it. So go from there.
Sure. So the Village Center is the most intense area of the Form-Based Code. Uh, it's supposed to be like a pedestrian, walkable area and that, that's actually the intent that's put in the report as well and that's cut right from the purpose of the Village Center. Uh, it says that the Village Center is the heart of the interchange study area and shall reflect a traditional neighborhood design and should incorporate transit-oriented design principles. Uh, ground for a commercial use is shall be required to contribute positively to a pedestrian-friendly environment. So it's intended to be a walkable pedestrian-oriented area. The building was built in the seventies way before this KPI, Kelly Park Form-Based Code Area was ever envisioned or thought of. Um, and it was, as we understand, a bar in unincorporated Orange County. It's zoned, and the property is zoned agriculture in the county. It lost the non-conforming status somewhere along the way. So the applicant has requested to annex into the city to establish the bar as a use back into the city. Um, they have offered up an agreement which tries to bring up the property to as the Village Center standard, Village Center standards as much as possible. So, uh, to answer your question, um, in a long-winded way, uh, it does not truly satisfy the Village Center concept. Uh, Wild Oaks would be a prime example, um, in Publix across the streets in the Village Center. However, there are out parcels related that will have buildings up to the frontages of the road in the future such time those come in.
So you, you made my point.
Yeah, and this is a, a future land use, which is a legislative matter. Um, it's, it's a policy decision of this board.
Anyone?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
My question.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
Yeah.
So I read through this very carefully. When you say the Village Center, I envision a center.
Hmm.
Where is the center?
The center is with its, if you picture the one-mile radius of the Form-Based Code area, the Village Center is a center east of the four-twenty-nine and west of the four-twenty-nine. So there's two areas that's a Village Center. It's primarily concentrated near the, the intersection of Plymouth Sorento Road and Kelly Park and it kind of goes around. This property falls within that. Um, and let me see if I can blow it up a little bit here for you. So, kind of goes about like this. And then off to the west, it takes in the Cape, um, Wild Oaks properties as well and properties on the north side of Kelly Park Road. It's supposed to be pretty much a downtown, uh, is the vision that was laid out when this code was written back, you know, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and it was adopted by the City Council. It's their policy, it's their rules and regulations for the Form-Based Code area.
Anyone else have questions of staff?
I'm having difficulty getting my head around how this is in a Village Center. It's an isolated parcel surrounded by residential units. It's on a main highway, which is going to be at some point in time expanded. The property directly south of it, if I read this correctly, is owned by the county and they're going to use it when they widen the road. This particular, uh, I was out there the other day. It has potential, based on the latest plan, for eleven parking spaces. What sports bar that I have ever gone to can be productive with only eleven parking spaces? Because it's not that there's other places close by for overflow parking. You know, the closest is Publix, but there's no sidewalks for someone to walk to this. So again, I can't get my head around the whole thing on how this is in a Village Center.
Right, I understand.
It also in, within the.
Hang on, hang on. Do you have any response to that, Mister Howe?
Uh, it seemed like he made more of a statement than, than a question, yeah.
Very well. All right, Commissioner Washington.
Yeah, and that was, I was just actually gonna piggyback a, a little bit on what he was saying because it, it, the way it's written is not the way it looks. Because it talks about creating a, a safe vibrant pedestrian-oriented village.
Right. All right. Okay, anyone else? Commissioner Ryan.
And Mister Howe, what would you like to see happen to that property?
Well, there's a number of uses that are permitted within the Village Center. The property's not in the city currently. It has to be annexed first and we're considering recommendation. So there's a number of uses, but it has to be pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use type uses. Um, it allows, I believe, restaurants, does allow tavern, that's permitted use. Um, a number of things can go there. So when you have a Form-Based Code, it's hard to say we want this use there because the building design dictates the type of use that can go in a building when you have a Form-Based Code. So Form guides the type of uses that can go there.
Anyone else have questions of staff?
I'm having difficulty getting my head around how this is in a Village Center. It's an isolated parcel surrounded by residential units. It's on a main highway, which is going to be at some point in time expanded. The property directly south of it, if I read this correctly, is owned by the county and they're going to use it when they widen the road. This particular, uh, I was out there the other day. It has potential, based on the latest plan, for eleven parking spaces. What sports bar that I have ever gone to can be productive with only eleven parking spaces? Because it's not that there's other places close by for overflow parking. You know, the closest is Publix, but there's no sidewalks for someone to walk to this. So again, I can't get my head around the whole thing on how this is in a Village Center.
Right, I understand.
It also in, within the.
Hang on, hang on. Do you have any response to that, Mister Howe?
Uh, it seemed like he made more of a statement than, than a question, yeah.
Very well. All right, Commissioner Washington.
Yeah, and that was, I was just actually gonna piggyback a, a little bit on what he was saying because it, it, the way it's written is not the way it looks. Because it talks about creating a, a safe vibrant pedestrian-oriented village.
Right. All right. Okay, anyone else? Commissioner Ryan.
And Mister Howe, what would you like to see happen to that property?
Well, there's a number of uses that are permitted within the Village Center. The property's not in the city currently. It has to be annexed first and we're considering recommendation. So there's a number of uses, but it has to be pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use type uses. Um, it allows, I believe, restaurants, does allow tavern, that's permitted use. Um, a number of things can go there. So when you have a Form-Based Code, it's hard to say we want this use there because the building design dictates the type of use that can go in a building when you have a Form-Based Code. So Form guides the type of uses that can go there.
Anyone else? No.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ma.
So Mister Howe, number two, the legislative one, is this the one where we're considering bringing this into the city or is that number three?
No. So Planning Commission does not consider annexations. That's only an action of the City Council.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is a recommendation of a future land use amendment, which just is a legislative item. It's a policy decision. The standards aren't as high as they are in a quasi-judicial hearing.
Very well. I do have one question. Now, item E, it says, uh, the standalone commercial residential, uh, state be allowed if they are designed to conform to the urban form designated for this area. And I know you had spoken to a redesign or, or, um, update of the building. What do we have to, to, basically as enforcement of that? Or how do, how can we be assured that it, that will be brought up to code? That it's not, looks exactly like it does today with the, you know, small amount of parking and the, the way the building is now?
So they propose an annexation agreement that would be considered by the City Council tomorrow evening, uh, that would accompany the annexation. And the annexation agreement says you will do one, two, three, four, and five to bring the property up to code. So it has what's called a pre-taking concept plan, pre-taking prior to the right-of-way being taken by Orange County for Plymouth Sorento. And then a post-taking plan, so the, how the property would can be configured after the right-of-way from Plymouth Sorento has been taken through there. Uh, the county has indicated they need thirty-five feet of right-of-way, uh, for Plymouth Sorento needs on there.
But that, what's going in front of the council, we don't have.
You don't, yeah, and I, on the rezoning, I'll touch on what they talked about and that's in the staff report. And it pretty much, I summarized the annexation agreement in the rezoning staff report. However, it's an, an annexation agreement is a contract and Planning Commission does not consider contracts. It's only between the City Council.
It would just be helpful if we had the specifics of that. That is my only concern. All right, very well. All right, is the applicant here and does he have a presentation? Or she, forgive me.
Hello, let me adjust this. I'm quite short. Hi, Kelly Turner, LPG. Um, with this property, uh, in the future, it's expected to have that front part of the property as part of the trail that's going to go through, which is going to allow for that pedestrian connection. Um, the owner has also stated he would put a connection on the west side of the property, but it, it's right against a dog park. So he would be willing to put a pedestrian access gate there. We just don't know how many dogs want to come to the tavern. Um, also, uh, as part of the post-taking plan, um, right now, we already have existing parking. Um, there is going to be sixteen spaces. Um, the front is going to have, uh, there's already eight existing or seven existing. There's going to be nine, um, alternative surface parking as, uh, you know, consistent with the LDC and that's going to go on the northern portion of the property. And then when the post-taking comes through, um, that, of course, existing front property would need to get ripped up um, for that trail to go in. So there's going to be parking added to the rear at that time. And then that would be consistent with the, um, transit-oriented development with having the parking, excuse me, parking services, parking surfaces to the rear. But at this time, since it's, um, not a substantial redevelopment and the parking's already existing, um, the parking can stay. And then once that, of course, is taken, parking gets ripped up and that's when we go ahead and add more parking per the annexation agreement in the rear.
Does anybody have a question? Okay, I have one, one question. When they remove the parking in the front of the trail, what will be the total amount of spaces?
So once that's done, there will be fourteen spaces. And we did go ahead and look at the code and we saw that it was, I believe, um, four spaces per a thousand square foot plus four spaces. I could be wrong on that part, but we did look at the code and make sure that the post-taking had the correct amount of parking for the square footage of the building.
Question.
Okay, Commissioner Washington.
What is the, um, capacity, uh, of your business, first floor and second floor?
Oh, the capacity? Um, we did look into that, just off the top of my head. I'm trying to think of the exact number. We looked at building capacity and, um, square footage and so forth to make sure that everything was in line with code um, and that we had the correct amount of parking and, you know, fire and all that good stuff. Um, so I can say it was looked into. I don't have the exact number on, uh, in my mind at the moment. Fifty-four? Oh.
It used to be fifty-four, but it's gonna be increased.
Okay, so it's fifty-four and then looking for a little bit of an increase.
Okay, so, um, of course you have to, uh, accommodate, uh, Orange County with the right-of-way. You've agreed to that. So, uh, how close would that be to the wall? You have a concrete wall with, uh, some kind of bushes or something. How far away will that be from, from the trail? I guess that's my question.
Okay, so once that's taken, we do have the new wall along the front and there's a five-foot buffer. So it's a three-feet concrete block with a wrought, with wrought iron and then a five-foot buffer.
Five-foot buffer?
Yes.
Trail?
Five, yes, five-foot.
Okay, and the trail eventually would connect to where? Right now it is dead-ended, right?
It's, um, supposed to connect with the Wingspan, the surrounding Wingspan Development. Um, this is going to actually be situated in between two parking areas of Wingspan. So having something that actually faces the road, um, would further the, you know, uh, walkability in the area rather than having, you know, a building ended up going, uh, getting demolished or whatnot and just having kind of an open area since by the time the taking's done, there's not going to be really room to put a brand-new building, um, in the area. And then having the parking on either side, it could be just dead-spaced unless something's done now to go ahead and have it, you know, a nice commercial area where people can walk through, go ahead, go in, celebrate a birthday party, you know, watch the football game, um, and then go back to the new development or wherever they came from.
All right, so I believe there is no existing trail that you would connect to?
So, um, there's plans for the trail in the Wingspread, Wingspan Development, um, that we're supposed to be connecting on either side too.
I see, okay. And, um, this business will be family-friendly?
I believe it would be family-friendly.
Commissioner Ma.
You said the occupancy is fifty-four people, correct? Plus staff? Was that including staff?
It was fifty-four, but I heard, hang on, sir. If you are, if you're gonna answer the question, then you can come to the microphone and hit your name and your address.
Um, it, it is fifty-four at this time.
Okay, and you're looking at increasing?
Uh, we could potentially have an increase in the future.
So where is everybody going to park?
Um, well, we're hoping that people are gonna walk there and then the, um, parking that's going to be put in, we're gonna have some spaces in the rear. Um, I don't know if you have a copy of the post-taking plan?
Yes, we do.
But it shows, oh, awesome, awesome. So it shows some more parking that's going to be put in the rear and then there's gonna be parking also on the north part of the property. Um, so the post-taking has fourteen parking spaces, which was in line with what's already the existing area.
So we have fourteen parking spaces for fifty-four people?
We did look at the parking code to make sure we met the minimums and we did meet the minimums. Um, and also, since this is supposed to be a transit-oriented area, we're hoping that most of the people that come here, well, probably most people that come here would be on foot, either from Wingspread or, you know, up and down that road because the whole idea is to have, you know, a whole area where it's walkable and people are walking from place to place, from Publix to the tavern to their home in Wingspread, to the commercial they're putting in Wingspread, or Wingspan, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else have questions? Commissioner Ryan.
Why do you want to be annexed by the City of Apopka?
Uh, well, it has lost its non-conforming status with the county. Um, so that means it would be non-conforming as a tavern with the county and he would have to, you know, use it to do something else, like maybe, uh, sell agriculture, um, rather, which also doesn't really fit in with the vision in the area and the existing building would kind of go to waste. Since it lost its non-conforming status, it'd have to revert back to A-one uses.
Fair enough. All right, anyone else? Okay, um, I do have one question relevant to the parking, the development that's behind that. Is there going to be adjacent parking there that would handle overflow if that was the case?
Uh, there will be parking there, but we don't have a parking agreement at this time. Um, there's going to be, uh, parking and garage parking and regular parking in both, uh, opposite ends of this restaurant. Or tavern.
I know you're, you're speaking of, of foot traffic and I, I, I don't, I know how people are and there's, there'd be a limited amount of foot traffic and again, with that capacity, and I realize that that's maximum capacity, but I still think parking might be a concern here. Okay, all right, very well. All right, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Does anyone here from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mister Chairman, I have a, to start the discussion, I just, I'll try, I'll try to keep this brief, but I want to get it succinct. The reason I got into this whole rigmarole of city government was I wanted to open a brewery right down the road from here. And, um, the reason that I, again, is got to know the Land Development Code because I don't blame the city, but I thought the Land Development Code is very restrictive for the vision that I had for the property that I had secured as well as the vision that was communicated by the city government, which is create a walkable downtown district. And whenever I look at this, what was, was a rural tavern out, you know, agriculture community, what is today is nothing and what can be in the future is going to be a, quite a, um, suburban slash urban area with walkable districts. We have apartments, there's grocery stores, et cetera, the south. So my inclination is if these people are willing to put their money into opening this business, I don't see why we're gonna stop them. That's my inclination. And I'm saying that, being, having sat in the shoes of a business wannabe business owner, in a way, just south of where we are today. And, you know, I think if, if I was able to execute on that vision, because the city code made it exceptionally restrictive and overly exclusive. because the city code made it exceptionally restrictive and overly expensive for what I wanted to do, if I was able to execute on the vision and the city had backed it, we would have a very nice start of a walkable district in downtown. And if these people are willing to put their money into maybe starting something out there, I'm certainly not gonna stand in the way of them doing it.
Very well. Anyone else?
The only, the only concern I have, again, is from a practical view, they don't have enough parking in that area to support the business. Other than that, I have, you know, really no concerns, but I can envision people, you know, they have a very successful business, hopefully. They have people parking up and down Plymouth Sorento Road, causing traffic issues and that, if there was some way they could expand their parking to accommodate the number of people they hopefully will be in the facility at one time, then I don't have an issue. But I do have an issue with the parking.
So, can I, can I step back on that one?
Commissioner Dooley.
That's a great point, Commissioner. The one ask I would have of you is that we don't let that stop this business, because I was told the same thing at my proposed building just south here, oh, you only have fifteen spots. And, you know, oh, you're never gonna be able to run a bar on fifteen spots. You know, it's kind of a chicken/egg scenario. If the place is so dang busy, we'll figure the parking out. If it fails, then the parking didn't matter. You know, and, and I hate to say, you know, that it's like the infrastructure coming behind, but at some point, you gotta take a stab at it and give them a shot to succeed. That's my point on that.
Very well. Commissioner Ryan.
I have a point also, if the parking capacity is up the code, is that right, Mister Howe?
Yeah, it's four spaces per thousand, per the land development code.
So, it is up the code, with their current plans?
I believe so, yes.
And how can you deny a property owner because of parking? You need to change the code if you don't like the parking, parking capacity.
Second it.
Anyone else? Very well, okay. Ready for a motion?
Scroll, and I'll create the motion. Seeing that there's no immediate disqualifiers, there's no churches, there's no schools, I feel very comfortable doing this. So, I'll make the motion to find the proposed future land use amendment from county rural to city mixed-use, consistent with the compliance of plan and land development code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Dooley, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
There was a five-two motion in favor for it.
Item number three. Item number three-one-three-six, rezoning KPI master plan, five-one-one-eight Plymouth Sorento Road, Cliffs Tap. Owners, David Chapone. Applicant, LPG Urban and Regional Planner, five-one-one-eight Plymouth Sorento Road. Mister Howe.
For the record, Bobby Howe, Planning Manager, this is the companion rezoning to the future land use amendment that was just recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. It's for point four-one acres of property, and the rezoning is from county rural A1 to Kelly Park Mixed Use Interchange, KPU, KPMU with a Village Center character overlay, to reestablish the bar of the property as a sports tavern. Property is located within the Kelly Park Form-Based Code area, if it's annexed, and specifically within the Village Center Overlay District. As I mentioned, it's located at fifty-one-eighteen Plymouth Sorento Road, and was a bar in the past in unincorporated Orange County that lost its non-conforming status. The applicant has submitted a voluntary annexation to the city for their consideration. As part of that annexation, there is an annexation agreement that has been drafted that reestablishes the property into a sports tavern and allows redevelopment of the property while satisfying certain criteria of the Form-Based Code, and acknowledges there will be a future right-of-way need for Orange, from Orange County, for right-of-way along Plymouth Sorento Road. The concept plan, there's a pre and a post-taking concept plan, this is the pre-taking plan. And these conditions are outlined in the annexation agreement that will be considered by the City Council tomorrow night. It will provide a ten-foot-wide trail along Plymouth Sorento Road that's constructed at the owner's expense, it's shown there on the plan. Provide a three-foot-tall knee wall and landscape buffer parallel to the trail, and it's shown on the plan as well, it's highlighted there. Provide restripped and enhanced paved parking area. Provides additional alternative surface parking. Provides a covered wood deck. Provides formal site development plan for review and approval by the City Council, which is consistent with the initial concept plan, meaning that this plan would have to go to City Council for approval and come back through this board for a recommendation of approval as well. And it renovates the existing building to incorporate a metal roof, new entry door, additional windows with awnings, and a wooden deck. In addition, a post-taking concept plan is provided that depicts reconfiguration of the property within twenty-four months of Orange County's acquisition through eminent domain of the property portion adjacent to Plymouth Sorento Road, as additional right-of-way for road widening that will relocate the ten-foot-wide paved trail, landscape buffer, three-foot knee wall, and paved parking to the side and rear of the building. Orange County has issued correspondence requiring thirty-five-foot right-of-way dedication for Plymouth Sorento Road as the road corridor is identified in Orange County's Transportation Element Twenty Thirty Long-Range Transportation Plan. In addition, the county requires a covenant on the property regarding notice of proximity language that the property is located within five miles of the Sand Hill Preserve. Development Review Committee recommends approval. However, it is noted that rezoning may not fully advance the broader vision of the Kelly Park Form-Based Code area. And the recommended motion this evening is approval. If you have any additional questions, a lot of the questions would be kind of related to what we talked about on the future land use, myself and the applicant are available as well.
Thank you, Mister Howe. Anyone have questions of staff? Very well. Anyone have questions of the applicant? Very well. Does anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Well, Mister Chairman, I can create the motion.
Very well.
I'll make the motion to recommend to find the proposed change in zoning from county A1 citrus rural to KPMU Village Center Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, consistent with the compliance of plan and land development code, and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, and recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Very well, thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Dooley, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, opposed? Alright, okay. Alright, so, got it.
How many were in opposition?
This was quasi-judicial, you didn't ask if we had an expert.
Has anyone had ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
Very well.
May I ask, Mister Chairman, how many were in approval and favor of, and how many were in opposition? Was it four-three?
Four, uh, four, yeah.
Okay.
Four-two, or five-two.
Five to two, okay, just like the last one, okay. Thank you.
Three-nose?
Alright. Item number four. Special exemption, four-five-eight Oakland Avenue, owners, MCCA. Applicants, Sophia Nassim. Mister Hamza.
Good evening, everyone, for the record, I'm your Hamza, Planner One. The applicant has submitted a special exception request to allow the development of a place of worship center on the site located at four-fifty-eight Oakland Avenue, and that is just south of East Main Street. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the four-fifty-eight Oakland Avenue site. The total area of the property is two-point-one-two acres, and currently has an existing one-story residence building on the site. The property has a future land use of commercial, and has a zoning of mixed-use downtown as shown on these maps. Here's a list of special exception review standards that the applicant must comply to according to the land development code. Here is a concept site plan of the proposed place of worship center, as you can see, the, there's gonna be a new six-thousand through four-hundred, around six-thousand-four-hundred square feet building to the, to the west of the current site, and to the west of the current existing building, and the existing one-story residences to remain. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval of a special exception to allow the development of a place of worship center within the mixed-use downtown zoning district. The recommended motion for Planning Commission is to approve a special exception to allow the development of a place of worship center in the mixed-use downtown zoning district. Staff and applicant are available for further comments and questions.
Thank you, Mister Hamza. Alright, has anyone had ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
No.
I have a question for Mister Ham.
Okay. Alright, does anyone have questions of staff?
I have a question for Mister Ham about the judicial, quasi-judicial.
Okay.
So, I saw some, some talk about it on social media, but I didn't respond to it, but I read what, what their concerns were. Is that part of something I'm supposed to report, or?
You certainly can, I don't know the exact content or how it was, it, it sounds like more, you, you saw something on it as opposed to having a communication, but certainly, there's no harm in disclosing it, which would allow the applicant to ask you, you know, about any possible prejudice you may have had from the review of the, or from seeing whatever it is that you came across.
Okay, I read some concerns on social media about this special exception.
And so, it'd be, and full disclosure to you, Mister Chairman, I did reply to the same, probably the communication he's saying, but I do, I don't believe that's ex parte communication, cuz I did not talk with the applicant or any party that's directly affected by this. So.
It can't be an ex parte communication, even if it impacts, if there's something that you read that impacts your decision.
Right.
But again, you've disclosed it, if you'd like to go into further detail, you're able to, otherwise, the applicant is able to ask you about anything that they'd like to about that, that particular, you happy to answer any questions?
Well, I have a question, if, okay, in this circumstance, you're on social media, or, or, let's just say, social media, because of this example, and as a commissioner, you give an opinion on the subject matter prior to the meeting, prior to this. In other words, somebody says, well, you know, they shouldn't do this, well, I think it should be okay. In, in other words, would that not be ex parte communication? You're, you're indicating which way you're going to vote, or your thoughts on the matter, prior to the actual meeting.
That could be an ex parte communication, yes.
So, the default setting or the safe setting would be don't comment?
You just gotta play it safe.
Correct. Don't, don't get involved. Okay.
Well, Mister Chairman, if I may respond to that, the, the extent of the discussion that I participated in, where I said we will look at the findings and facts and make a decision based on the facts of the case, that's it, not any perceived judgment and not biases, we're gonna look at the facts.
I was not making an accusation.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I'm just saying that.
I was simply clarifying that it's one thing to say, I understand, I have people pigeonhole me all the time, and go, what do you think about this? And I go, I don't know, we'll see in the meeting, and we'll make a decision based on that. I absolutely will not answer that question under any circumstances because of the sunshine law and our rules. And that was my only point that I was making, is to clarify that even if you say, hmm, seems like a good idea, or even you could be perceived, if you just put a smiley face after they said, well, we should approve this, what does that mean? So, to me, the default setting would be nothing, zero. Don't be involved. Once it's done, somebody asks a question, you can answer it, here's why, my, my logic for voting on that, but as far as prior to the meeting, I would think, in any agenda mine, quasi-judicial or not.
Well, quasi-judicial communications are allowed. You can make them, there's a certain risk that comes along with them, and of course, just because there's a communication, doesn't mean that it's prejudicial. Idea of the disclosure is at least to put it out there so that, that it can be asked about to prevent more to, to show that a particular communication is not, in fact, prejudicial. But certainly, certainly, if there's, there's nothing disclosed, that, that's safe, but you can have communications, and it'd still be a safe communication. Process is there, just so that it can be put out and asked about to ensure fairness and due process in the hearing.
Well, if you were sitting at the table with me, I would feel comfortable, cuz I could just look at you and ask, but in most cases, that's not gonna be the circumstance, so that's, okay. That clarified it, alright, any other questions? Commissioner Washington?
I, I, I believe I understand what the gentlemen are referring to, and I saw something quickly in social media as well about the occupants of this property. And to me, it doesn't matter who it is. You know, we are voting on the rules, the land development code, that's all we're doing. And for you to be, anybody to be influenced by, oh, well, do you know this? No. It's improper, it's out of order. All we're dealing with is a special exception for these folks to do something. That's all it is. So, which leads me to another thing. The church existed there for many years without a special exception. And they probably should have gotten one back, back when, but who knows what happened back in the day? Seems like that happened all the time. So, now, because they wanna construct this building, now it brings in a surface, oh, we didn't know we need to have this special exception, fine, they're following the rules. So, seems to me, all we're doing tonight is to approve the special exception because they wanted to construct a place of worship, which has been there all along anyway, you know, on this property. And so to have all this dialogue about social media and what it's, what they're talking about is mute, is immaterial. So, I say we just focus on the issue. It's a special exception for a place of worship in the multiple use downtown area, period.
I agree with you, Commissioner Washington, my, my only question was whether it needed to be disclosed, and I read what they had to say on social media, and of course, I didn't respond.
So, Mister Chairman, I have a question, and I don't know if this is for, I don't know who this is for, but it's for one of the three of you, or, or that type of thing. In your opening, Mister Hamza, in your opening, you said something to the effect, to develop a place of worship. I, I think that needs to be reworded, because there is a place of worship there now. It implies that there's no place of worship there. So, you could say adding to, creating a new additional place of worship, you know, a joint, just, just as a comment. The, the other thing where they did not have an special exception, the special exception permit all these years, and now it's been brought to light, and there are comments in this packet that there are other places of worship in that area. Do we know, do they have special exception permits for those as well, or not? And how many do, how many do we have, and how many should have?
Some of those places of worship, the existing ones, have been there for decades prior to this code being adopted, which was adopted in twenty nineteen, which required special exceptions for places of worship in the downtown. Many, many decades, in some cases.
So, and, and I appreciate you saying that, because my, my next comment would then be, is in the packet, I think there needs to be, in the future, there needs to be some wording about this was grandfathered through. They did not have, and they've grandfathered through, because as I'm sitting there reading that packet, I'm drawing into question, okay, is there something that, you know, I realize they didn't have it, they've clearly stated that, now they're asking for a special exemption permit for the new building, and the others, is there, is there potential repercussion in the way that we're going to make a decision tonight? And so, I, I just, it would have been much easier for me to understand had that been written in the packet.
Let me offer a point of clarification for you, Mister Mock. The place of worship that is currently being operated on at this property, there is no special exception that's ever been granted for it.
Correct.
There's no BTR, Business Tax Receivable.
There's no BTR, Business Tax Receipt, that's ever been granted for, granted for it. There's never been a fire inspection done on the premises or building inspection done on it. As far as we know, they moved in and started operations some years ago. There was never a special exception applied for, granted for it. They've decided to come to the city and ask for the special exception for the entire property. Special exception's a use on a property. So that would establish the use on this property, um, which would include the existing facility that they have and then the new sixty-three-hundred square foot building that they're looking to construct.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Wood?
Um, I just have a question. Going through the actual plans, there's a note here that, uh, where was that? That they applied for a special exception with the county at some point when they started operations.
Where does it state in the?
I'm trying to find that again.
I saw that on the plan too during the review, uh, Mister Woods. It's that we have no record of a special exception, and, and if it was in the county, this property, as far as I'm aware of, since I've been with the city first time since twenty-seventeen, has always been in the city.
Was it ever in the county? It's always been city property?
Far as I'm aware, it's always been city property. Yeah, it's platted as one of the original subdivisions of, city town of Apopka. It might be a Scribner's error on the plans. Um, we see that sometimes too.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, and, and in, in reference to the, the feedback or the, the, the social media thing, and, and reference to what Commissioner Washington said, I, I agree that our job is to look at the paperwork in front of us and make a decision on the content, character, the area, what the city wants to do. And in addition to that, if, if there's a, a, a pushback on it, where, where is the people? You know, that, in, in my mind, if it was really a problem or that special exemption was gonna cause a problem or people were very much against it, then there would be someone in the audience speaking on that matter, in my mind. That, that's just one of the, when I look at it, a very important factor is what, if there are a, a public outcry, then, and we hear it, then we can consider that, but in this case, I, I don't see any. And I know there was not any kind of public meeting in this, correct?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
There wasn't any kind of public meeting or public notice on this, correct?
There was, like in the beginning of the application, the, the applicant is required to hold a community meeting with, for property owners within three-hundred feet. They have to notify them, and, uh, according to the evidence in the community meeting letter, um, the meeting was held, but nobody showed up.
Exactly. Alright. If there's nothing else, we're ready for a motion.
Uh, you have to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for motion.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve a special exception to build a place of worship center in the mixed-use downtown zoning district, subject to the exhibits and findings of the staff report.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Mo. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Woods. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Very well. Do we have any new business? Any old business?
No, sir.
Very well. Meeting adjourned.